Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abernathy, absent. Councilmember Bush?
Here.
Councilmember Dauphin?
Here.
Councilmember Leveque?
Here.
Councilmember Mutola?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Tedford?
Here.
Councilmember Jim Tedford?
Here.
Councilmember Jesse Skolnick? Absent. Councilmember Michael Wendis?
Here.
Councilmember Phyllis Winkler?
Here.
Your honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So anybody here for Citizens Forum? Evening. Name and address.
It matters.
Always does.
Oh, okay. Well, for some people it matters.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
It's part of the record-keeping.
My name's Gennaro. Y'all know who I am. I live around, drive around.
Is that on? Yep, it's on.
Probably not reaching my... How y'all doing? My name's Gennaro. Um, I don't have no address, but I drive around Vernon a lot. So I was in group the other week, last week, and I can't talk about personal stuff like that because of HIPAA law and all that, you know, contracts and whatsoever, you know? But I want to show you my week, what I go through like I do at group, so you can understand what I go through out here. I'm broke. You know I'm broke. Only thing that saves me is the recycle cans. Lucky that we have a lot of old white people that are really, really nice to me, that let me go on their personal property and take the stuff because they trust me. But, um, yeah, man, man, how you been? How y'all been? How y'all parents? Are y'all grandparents alive? Y'all kissing them, hugging them, visiting them? Make sure they don't die out on y'all, you know? Because it matters, you know? But, uh, yeah, had my wife's ex-boyfriend pull out a knife that's big on me at the gas station right over here at Total. I called Sergeant Wise and let him know, you know, like, "Listen, the dude pulled out a knife on me. I'm just letting you know," you know? And I just don't know how to, you know, I never really said, I usually would just go home, grab a bat or a knife, just stab the shit out of him, you know, because when somebody do that. I'm just being, you know, being frank with you, you know? It's that things like that I go through, through the streets, you know? People need help out there, you know, people with psychological or mental problems, you know, and stuff like that. You know, you don't know what a person's ever thinking. You don't know his intelligence. You don't know what strategic or tactical move he's making or what he's doing at any time, you know? But for me to go through stuff like that, you know, I explain in group, I tell them, you know, "Why do I go through stuff like that? Why is this dude hate me so much? Am I prettier than him? Do I make more money than him?" I mean, he got me fired already from Harbor Freight because he lied. He said, "I brought a pistol to Harbor Freight." I never carried a gun in my life. A BB gun that dad bought me, maybe a pellet gun from Walmart because you don't need a license, maybe a musket because you could buy one without a license, and you could buy 50 pounds of black powder by law, you could do that. You know that, and I know that, because you could have a musket and police can't arrest you for it, you know? But I don't tell too many people that, especially young boys, because you know, today's different, you know? I don't know if y'all see that, but today's different. Boys are different and guys and men are different. No respect for their parents, no respect for their grandparents. They'll let them cross the street and get hit by a car and don't even care. I seen a white dude tell his mother, "F you, B," and I just looked at him and I'm like, "Wow, you really speak to your mom like that?" Like, "Yeah, we run her." I'm like, "Okay, cool." And I'm looking around like, "Which way could I smack you three ways?" Because I would never do that to my mother. I would never call my mama, "Dog," you know? There's a lot of stuff out here, man, that a lot of these young kids need help, too. A lot of them are, their parents probably are not educated, or they just don't care because they work so much, you know, that they don't have time to sit down and talk to them or whatsoever, you know, instead of things I talk about in group. I don't like talking about it because I see it, you know? What do you do for the town? I drive all night. I stay up all night and watch every move the police make. I respect the police because they just busted somebody. Chief, I commend you on that. Narcotics Task Force got somebody. That was pretty good because I was watching that dude, too. That dude's been at the hotel for so long. It's amazing how he get away like that. I just don't like, I just mind my business because I don't want to get shot, you know? I don't have a gun. I miss my old job at Harbor Freight. I really do. That was a great job. We finally got the guy to get, he got arrested, extorted my friend, like you know already, I told you, you know? But I don't know, man. I see a lot of y'all. I see every move that's being made out here, okay? But I am pushing that recycling thing, though, with somebody going around. Maybe I can come to the office and since I have my own business number and stuff like that, I can set up a type of contract with the town if it's possible, you know? Because I do, I mean, today I made about 160, and I donate some money tonight to Cornerstone. Uh, you know, just want to let you know what I go through weekly. And Chief, man, I thank your boys, too, man, for not effing with me on the street, okay? They're really great, Sergeant Graco, especially your guy, Lieutenant Mora, Sergeant Wise, Sergeant Hannaford. They're good. I like them. They're very respectful, and they do their job. I just, you know, some of them are bad, but not all, you know?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Citizens Forum?
Ariana Nieves-Matias, Vernon resident. Appreciate the opportunity to get some face time with you all. I am a little bit frustrated that I have to have this time at the mic. I've served on the town council, and in my time, I really grew to believe that we could all learn to respect each other's differences and really come and serve the town of Vernon as a community. And over the past few months, I've been personally requesting that the individuals that I elected to represent me seek out ways in which we can be, build the community. And I feel as though there is a lack of transparency in the town council, and I'm disappointed by the individuals that I have representing me. I work really hard to be a positive contributing member to our community, and when simple requests such as information regarding public spaces is denied in such an aggressive, unnecessary way, I see how, I don't see how that benefits any single person in this town. We all claim to love the town of Vernon and Rockville. We all claim that we want to support the members of Vernon and Rockville. If that is the case, we need to put our differences aside. This is not DC. There's no political chips. You are a member of this community, and I want to be represented by the people in this community. If transparency is something that we can't get behind, I think we need to find different folks to be in the town council. I did not elect a king. I elected a mayor, and I want to be represented in a transparent way. ARPA funds were requested to have community members make suggestions. Where did that go? What ended up with that? I don't remember a single announcement after the fact. I don't remember a single conversation after the fact. It was posted, "Hey, this is a great opportunity for you to share what you have planned or thoughts that you would like to see in your community." What happened to that? Community spaces. Why is that such a difficult request? Why is it banging our head against the table to ask about a teen center when we have no problem funding a senior center? And I'm not saying we shouldn't fund a senior center. This isn't pie. We're not slicing it up, and we can't give enough for everyone. This is a community. It is comprised of multiple different people with different backgrounds, different needs. We literally just saw. Resources are important. Spaces and community are important. I would like to be represented by people who understand that and respect that. I don't care how you lean politically one way or the other. You say you love the town of Vernon. Please prove it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Michael Winkler, 20, Goddard, Vernon. There was a discussion at the last meeting about whether the council can direct the mayor to do something, and it was, that conversation should have ended instantly. Every council member should know the charter. The charter says in Chapter 10, Section 2, "The mayor shall exercise such other powers and duties as may be required of the mayor by ordinance or resolution of the town council." It's as clear as day in the charter that the council can direct the mayor. Why this was even a question, why somebody just didn't say, "Oh, that's already been settled?" I don't know. You're on a very powerful body, an incredibly powerful body, but you don't act like it. One day, a motion of this council, just an ordinary resolution, exempted Vernon from all its land use regulations, planning and zoning, wetlands, everything, just a simple resolution. And, and, you know, if you, if you went back and made us subject to all those rules, then the function of the mayor's office would change dramatically because they'd have to go to inland wetlands, and they'd have to go to planning and zoning, and sell the town's proposals. So you have unbelievable power, but pretty much, I don't see any debate. I don't see you getting together to discuss motions. I mean, Brian can remember when, you know, 20 years ago, we used to be here till midnight debating, and everybody contributed, and we tried to actually solve the problems at the meetings. And that just doesn't seem to happen anymore, and that's too bad because there's some great minds here, and I think you could come up with better solutions. On another matter, on November 19th and December 3rd, you went into executive session to discuss teachers' contracts. You cannot do that. Teachers' contracts are negotiated by the Board of Education. The only exemption in the Freedom of Information Act is negotiation strategy, and you don't negotiate that contract. The Board of Ed does. Once the union approves it, and the Board of Ed accepts it, and the negotiators, of course, have signed off on the language, that's a public document. Once the Board of Ed approves it, you can't go into executive session to discuss a public document. You can't try to use the negotiations exemption when you didn't do the negotiations. So I know, my opinion will not be accepted as gospel, and I'll have to go to the FOI again to get the public's business done in public, like it should be. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Anybody else? No? All right. Two, two things in the desk today. The Local Historic Properties Commission and the Vernon Historic Society are sponsoring a workshops, workshop on sustainability and historic preservation. The presentation will focus on making historic buildings energy efficient. The event is this Saturday, February 8th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to noon. The event is being held here in the chambers. Please be sure to RSVP to the Planning Department at 860-870-3667 by February 5th, 2025. Say, keep track of the numbers. Then the second is an invitation from ECHN, the Vernon Community Network invites you to a Black History Breakfast Celebration, February 20th, 2025, 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM at Rockville General Hospital Cafeteria. The keynote speaker will be Dr. Diane Claire Kearney, the Director of Adult Education and Equity for Manchester Public Schools. And the third, or the, the last event is the Rockville High School Marching Ram Band has been invited to the 2026 Memorial Day Parade in Washington, DC to represent the state of Connecticut. Go Rams! That's great. All right, that's all I have. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda as written.
Second by Laura. Are we pulling either one of them? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Brian, new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the town council gratefully accepts the generous donation of $1,000 from the Ben Lovett Memorial Fund for the Vernon Police Department K-9 Fund.
Second. Second by Laura. Any questions on that? Yes, Marion.
I'd just like to thank the family for thinking. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the application for and the receipt of the Capital Workforce Partners Summer Youth Employment and Learning Grant for 2025, and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for same.
Second by Laura. Michelle, can you just give us a quick little overview again of what this is? I don't think that's on.
There we go. Sorry about that. The Summer Youth Employment and Learning Program is a grant-funded program that Youth Services has offered for many, many years now. In Vernon, we offer a Tier 3 program, which serves youth that are ages 16 through 24. We partner with local businesses. We partner with town departments, community organizations, to provide work sites for the students to get, and they each get 120 hours throughout the summer. We start the program. We kick it off with a week worth of employability, life skills training, and then they start at their, at their job sites. We, our staff check in with them throughout the week multiple times just to make sure that everything is going well, to provide any support that's necessary. And for many, it's their first paycheck, so it's really exciting time for the kids.
Thank you. Any questions? Terry?
Through you. Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
So why is the age 16 to 24?
Through the mayor. So we in Vernon operate a Tier 3 program, and for that program, you have to be 16.
Sorry, but the cap is 24?
Yes.
Years old?
Yes.
So do we have a lot of participants at 24 years old?
Through the mayor, not usually, to be honest with you. It's, they're usually younger. They're usually about, you know, some of, most of them are in high school still, and some of them have graduated, but we, we haven't really had a 24-year-old.
So is the age set by us or by the?
Through the mayor, yeah, through Capital Workforce Partners, which is our, which is the partnering, the agency who, who gives us the money for the program.
Okay, so they probably reach out to the older, that older population?
Yeah.
Through them. Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Good evening, Michelle.
Hi.
In the past, you've spoke about how many of the students retain their jobs for the future. Do you have an idea or a percentage of how many that occurs?
So through the mayor. So last year, I believe we had two that retained employment. Seventeen of the 20 went back to school, and so, and then we had one youth that we referred to American Job Centers to, where to get employment.
Thank you. Excellent. That's really good to hear, and I'm hoping more in the future this happens.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Phyllis?
Thank you. Through you. Hi, Michelle. I'm just wondering, we employ 20 students, essentially. I'm wondering how many applications you typically get? Like, how many more people would like this opportunity?
Yeah, through the mayor. So we, we did get more than 20 applications. I think it was in the, around 30 applications. We like to, Capital Workforce Partners encourages us to have extra applicants because there are times that applicants fall through, and so it's really important that we fill all of our spots. Thank you.
Anybody else? Marion?
A question on, do we offer anything for that 14 to 15-year-old?
Through the mayor. So we do have a counselor and training program that is for that age group.
And how does the people made aware of that?
Through the mayor. So this year, we're collaborating with Park and Rec on that program, so it will be available through their registration process.
Great. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Terry, second time.
Thank you. Through you. So the application process, like, you guys, I'll say individually, look at the application. So what is like that, I'll tell the hiring process for the program?
Through the mayor. So the applications are posted on the Capital Workforce Partner website, so students need to go in there to apply, and they can get support with that application through our Youth Services Office at the high school. And after all the applications are submitted, they do have to provide supporting documentation. Then we do intake sessions with, or interviews with each of the applicants.
Do you partner with Capital on that process, or do you guys then just determine, here, Youth Service in Vernon, this is who we're looking to?
Through the mayor, it is, we, we determine who gets into the program.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the application for and receipt of the fiscal year 2025 Neglected Cemetery Account Grant Program offered by the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management on behalf of the Vernon Cemetery Department, an amount of $5,000, and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for same.
Second.
Seconded by Marion. All right, you want to come up? Just give us an idea. What, what is the $5,000 going to do?
Hello? Okay. Good evening. Through the mayor, Kevin Bowman, Superintendent of the Cemetery. We got this neglected cemetery grant application. We have filled it out, and part of it is you can receive up to $5,000 if granted. Depends on the amount of people that put in for the, for the grant, amount of towns. We have chosen to repair and straighten and repair and clean memorial stones, and that's what we're hoping for if we get accepted.
And you're going to be, your, your team is going to be doing that?
We're going to do the work. Yep.
Any questions? Brian?
Mr. Bowman, good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Southwest Cemetery is where? Which one?
That is on the corner of Dobson and Route 83.
Okay. Do you know if there's any Civil War soldiers buried there?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good, because the sons of your veterans are on the museum. We have a program to help with that, and we did one up at, before your time, up at, we did Charles Dart's grave up at Grove Hill.
Okay.
We set that and we did the headstone. So why don't we contact each other and have a discussion? Could help enhance that maybe, perhaps.
We can look into that, for sure.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Marion?
I just, I just want to say I noticed the work you've been doing and, and the work that you do setting these stones. It's, you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
They also have some money available for that cemetery down there to go in there and actually set as many of those stones up as we can. They're going to use their staff again. Anybody else? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the application for and receipt of the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Assistance for Firefighters Grant, AFG, an amount of $37,437.54, and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for same.
Second.
Mr. Tedford? Oh, Andrew. If I just say Mr. Tedford, there's two of you. Sorry. All right, you guys want to give us a heads up on what this is?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Dan Wazlowski, Fire Administrator for the town. Katie Rosenthal, Chief Medical Officer, and you know Chief Epler from the Fire Department. This is a FEMA grant. We apply for it every year. It is a very competitive grant. This is Assistance of Firefighters Grant, federal grant that we submitted for in December, and this grant would go to buy 14 automatic external defibrillators to be placed on each of our fire apparatus.
Yep. And you know, you guys want to give us just a briefing on the AEDs? Because I know in the, with the police, we're having a lot more saves with them.
Absolutely. So I had Katie run some numbers today. So 2024, we had 64 cardiac arrests in the town of Vernon in five saves. An hour before we came here tonight, we just had another cardiac arrest, who cardiac arrested in front of the police officer who was able to provide early defibrillation, and we were just told a little while ago, we received spontaneous respirations back on that patient. So this system does work. We have streamlined in the last couple of years that the police department, as well as the fire department, uses the same brand of AEDs and working with the Board of Ed. We have streamlined that they are now on board, that we, the entire town uses the same variety, which cuts down on costs for buying pads, batteries, and the incidentals that go along with that program. In the last year, we have also taken over maintenance of all the Board of Ed AEDs once again, so that we know they work, and they're worked on by our professionals.
And, and when you hear five out of 64, a lot of people might say, "Well, that's not a big number." That's, that's, that's a huge number. It truly is. Mike?
Through you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. You said that you apply for this every year. How many years in the past 10 have you actually received it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll refer you. What have, how many times have we gotten?
Get it regularly. Three grants, I believe. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Three grants the chief can remember in the past 10 years.
Okay, awesome. So it's, it is highly competitive, but is this like something that is in desperate need, these AEDs?
Well, the, the police all have one in their cars, and they usually go to the same calls, but to have it available on the, on the fire truck, fire trucks go to a lot of different things as well. So, yeah, it's, it's good to have one there.
Well, I'm hoping you get it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Terry?
Through you. Hi. So it says here, the Fire Department understands the importance of early defibrillation and the chain survival, and that they may be strategically, strategically placed around town. So where around town would they be placed, or are they just going to be on the apparatus?
So through you, Mayor. So currently, we do have them in all-town buildings. Every ambulance has one, and currently only, I believe, three of our fire trucks carry them. I carry one in my vehicle, as well as Katie carries one in her vehicle, and as the mayor said, all the police cars carry them as well. Recently, we added them to the sports fields with the Board of Education through a program with them, so that they're available during sporting events as well.
Thank you.
We also, when I, when I first became mayor, we started training our people in the basic first aid, which is use of the AED and CPR, choking, things like that. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby resolves in accordance with Chapter 12, Section 9 of the Vernon Town Charter that it is in the best interest of the town to waive the sealed bid requirements for auditing services from the firm Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company, LLC. Year one, $90,000. Year two, $93,600. And year three, $96,900. And further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to execute on behalf of the town of Vernon any instrument, instruments to that effect.
Terry. Second by Terry. Hi, Frank. Why don't you tell us why it's in our best interest?
I will do that. Good evening, everybody. All right. Yeah, this is, as Brian just stated, this is a three-year request to extend the audit services with Mahoney and Sable, who have been really excellent auditors for us. They provide us really excellent technical assistance, as evidenced by our continued awards for reporting excellence. So the request, this is a, a second extension of a, of audit services, and it's not unusual to have auditors on for, you know, several years, because there's not that many firms that do this kind of work anymore. They're all consolidating, and that partially has the request, reason why this request is being asked for. And also, we're in transition, transition, as you know, from the finance office, so it would be very helpful for the finance office not to have to have a new set of auditors, because there's a lot of work for the finance, finance officer, staff, sorry, we have no auditors. It's a big learning curve for both us and the auditors. It takes a couple of years for them to get grounded. So this is why I'm asking for the commission, I mean, for the council's consideration to extend the audit services for three, three more years. And the average increase for the three years, as Brian mentioned, the, the annual increase is 3.45% increase per year.
John, you want to weigh in as well?
Yeah, just briefly. So in terms of those costs, that's standard operating cost for, for an audit. That's not anything that's out of line from what we're seeing across the state. And I just echo Frank's, you know, the consistency matters with the transition of, of me coming into this position, just for the stability, and then Frank's incredible work over the last 36 years of winning the award through GFOA. I want to commend Frank for all of his work, but this is, this is vitally important to the operation of the finance department, so.
You were telling me about the fact that a lot of these auditors don't show up unseen either.
Yeah, so through the mayor. When I was in Danbury, it was all through Zoom and Tella that the audit services were conducted. I, I see our auditors here probably, I don't know, once a week, twice a week.
They're here plenty.
Yeah. And it's just great to have that in-person connection still. It's really helpful to our finance team, so.
Questions? Bill?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think I understand this, but just to confirm, this is a straight extension of the existing contract, no change in work scope?
Correct. Yeah, through, through the mayor. Yes, this is just the exact same services we've been provided in the past.
Thank you.
Is the raise the same as that they were getting in the contract?
Correct. Yes.
The percentage was?
Approximately, yes.
Well, Mike?
Through you, Mayor. Good evening, Frank. That's what I was going to ask. How did you determine the percentage of increase every year, and is this, this carried over? So there's like really no negotiation in the interest percentage?
Sure, I can answer that through the mayor. Yes, I did reach out to the, our audit partner, and, and before I, of course, put this memo together, to see if he would provide us a three-year audit extension, bid or amount. So he, this is what he provided us was with.
All right. Thank you, Frank.
It's consistent.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Frank is doing a good job down there right now.
I'll hang here for the next one, in case there's questions.
Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the purchase of a JCB 3CX Compact PECO from Alta Equipment of Berlin, Connecticut, in an amount not to exceed $126,350 for the Cemetery Department using cemetery endowment funds.
Seconded by Marian. All right, so basically, what we're doing is, we are replacing a 2004 John Deere 110, which basically was undersized when it was bought way back then. It's an undersized machine, more of a homeowner and farm machine. The open cab is hard to use in the winter when driven from cemetery to cemetery. The hydraulics are getting weaker, front bucket twisted, light duty, because it's a light-duty machine. Basically, one of the cylinders is shot, and just to build the one to replace the cylinder, it's going to be $5,500. When I was up at the cemetery, that thing was leaking. It's past its life. And this money, again, will come out of the Cemetery Trust Endowment Fund. Questions? Billis?
Thank you. Through you. I was contacted by, actually, a Republican resident who had a couple of questions, and she couldn't be here tonight, so I agreed to ask those questions.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Can you pull it a little closer?
I can move it closer. Yep. Okay. But you heard that?
Yep.
Okay.
I was, it was me, my hearing aids. I left them at home.
So she was wondering if the money is coming out of the interest or the endowment itself?
The interest.
And she's asking if the stipulations of the endowment fund would allow this?
Yes.
Okay. And she's also wondering if the endowment fund, why the endowment fund isn't being used to fix the Gross Hill Chapel, which is having some structural issues.
That, everything's done by what's needed at the time.
Is there any plan to look at fixing the?
We've been working on that for a while.
Working on planning it?
Trying to figure out how to fix it. Somebody did work on it years ago and basically used the wrong mortar. So it's all, it's got to be chipped out and replaced.
Oh, I can relate to that. We had that problem with some floor gr-. And finally, I'm wondering, I think this is fine, but I'm wondering if you can project how much of the use would be on the cemetery side versus the town use? Because it, it's going to be shared.
I'll answer that one, too. So it's, it's not going to be shared. What happens is, is we have a program across town that if all of a sudden, for some reason, all the other tractors are broken town, and that was the last one, guess what? We're going to come knocking. If his tractor can get in, because this tractor can get into smaller spaces, if for some reason we have nothing that can get into this small space, we'll come knocking. Just the same as the Cemetery Department needed to tick, to get some, get rid of some stumps. Well, Parks has a stump grinder. A few years ago, I basically had an inventory done of all equipment in all departments. And essentially, if cemetery, cemetery has a jackhammer for winter to break through. Okay, if another department needs a jackhammer one time, we shouldn't spend taxpayer money on renting one or buying one, because we have one, just like the stump grinder. We don't, we're not going to spend money. We had, we went out as a council, like, a year or two ago, we bought a, a, a trench tool, so that we can bury conduit and, and stuff, and it saved us a ton of money. But we have one. If Cemetery needs that, they can reach out to us. Parks needs it, they can reach out to, because Public Works has that one. So it's not, it's not a matter of sharing. Somebody had written that in there. What it comes down to is if any piece of equipment anywhere in town needs to be used because there's nothing available. And if you remember, we've replaced most of our tractors in the last couple of years. So his would probably be the last one used.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great policy, but yeah, reading the wording that it would be shared is what.
I think somebody took the fact that, in, you know, it's part of that whole umbrella, and, and kind of said, wait, wait a second. So that, that's it. So this is going to be 99.9% is going to be used by them. And I doubt it's ever going to be used by anybody else, because we do have a lot of tractors in town.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Marian?
The machine's 21 years old. We don't know how many hours are on it. Definitely needs to be replaced. Somebody did good work on checking out the JCB. Supposed to be the superior choice, low emissions, fuel efficiency. So I did the whole nine yards, because you know me and toys.
They've also gone to-
It's, it's great.
They've also gone to a couple cemeteries to actually see the machine in operation.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? Hey, there's, there's the price. Brian?
Senior, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen. Did you go compare this to state bid list?
Want me to answer?
Go ahead.
It was done through Sourcewell.
Okay. So in regular departments, when they get rid of machinery, they auction it off or something? Are we going to have a burial service for this?
That's, that's going to be up to Eric.
Seriously, what do, what do you do with the, just auction it off?
It's not big enough for any, for any other jobs in town, that was really not big enough.
No, but I mean-
It'll go, it'll go auctioned off. Somebody will probably buy it.
Thank you.